Okay, it is 6:30, so I will now call this regular meeting of the Corleville City Council to order on June 27, 2023. Could I have the roll call, please?
Knutson. Gross.
Here.
Quinn.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Goodrich.
Here.
All council members are present, as is the mayor, the city clerk, the deputy city administrator, city attorney, and several other staff in the audience. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Move by Goodrich.
Second.
Seconded by Jones. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Onto item number four, community comments. This is a time for community members to speak to us about items that aren't on the agenda, or items that are on the agenda but are not subject to a public hearing. Each speaker will have five minutes, and we do reserve the right to adjust both the overall comment time and the individual speaking time based on the number of speakers or any accommodations that a speaker might need. So, is there anyone that would like to speak to us tonight? Okay, we'll move on to item number five, SIFCO Project Urban Renewal Plan. This is for the abatement portion of the development agreement for the SIFCO project. The public hearing scheduled for today needs to be postponed till August 8, 2023. The consultation will be at 2 o'clock PM on Monday, July 24, 2023. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution, resetting a date for consultation and a date for public hearing on the proposed amendment number 15 to the urban renewal plan for the Mall and Highway 6 urban renewal area introduced for adoption by council member Knutson, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, could I have the roll call, please?
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number six, parcel located at Acorn Drive and James Street adjacent to Jacobs Clear Creek 7th subdivision. This is a public hearing, and we will start with a report from our community development director, Dave Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. The immediate area surrounding the subject property is generally characterized by commercial businesses, including hotels and restaurants. Immediately west and south of this property is Altmeier Park. This amendment will allow for an approximate 80,000 square foot light industrial uses. The concept plan that's been forwarded along with this application and provided to City Council shows a concept to include office, light assembly, as well as some light fabrication and distribution. If the application is supported, city staff will require that the subsequent rezoning, as well as site plan application, be a planned unit development. Industrial uses can coexist in commercial areas, but given the general hospitality nature of this area, a PUD gives the city much more control in terms of design in order to mitigate any potential negative impacts or conflicts there. So, those design controls would not otherwise be in place. I can tell you, we are currently looking at concepts, and all of those are for a PUD development. So, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this at their June 7 meeting, and by a vote of seven to zero, the commission recommended to approve the application to amend the Corleville community plan from regional commercial to industrial for the subject property. Thanks.
Fantastic. Thank you for that overview. Okay, I will now open the public hearing on this item. Is there anyone that would like to speak to us tonight? Do we have any written comments?
No written.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and we will consider the ordinance.
7D, ordinance number 20...
Sure, sorry, go ahead, yeah.
Can I just ask a question first? So, Dave, does this lie between what's paved now, where Acorn Drive is paved, and James Street?
No, this is actually on the western edge of where Acorn and James are.
Okay.
It, the eastern boundary of this aligns with where that pavement currently ends.
All right, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
7D.
Yes, take two.
Ordinance number 2023-1009, an ordinance amending the Corleville community plan to reflect certain property, generally known as a portion of the southwest quarter of the southwest quarter of Section 36, and a portion of the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 1, both in Township 80 North Range 7 West of the 5th Principal Meridian in Corleville, Johnson County, Iowa, to be designated industrial use in place of regional commercial use, is introduced for adoption by council member Gross, first consideration, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Any other questions, comments, or discussion on this agenda item?
I do have a comment, actually. It said that the park includes Discoff and Archery Range, but I think Archery Range moved, and I don't know if that make a difference, you know, for the general public, if they read this.
It doesn't make much of a difference in terms of compatibility, but it is a point worth clarifying and noting, so, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Is this the land, I guess, that they requested to make this residential?
Yes, at one point, the property owners did present a concept to the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council for general feedback, and the consensus at that time of both the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council was, this was not an area that would be well-suited for residential use, in large part due to its proximity to sidewalks, really any sort of connection or access to amenities, things of that nature. It's why this area's been largely commercial and industrial. It's a little bit disconnected on the south side of Interstate 80, and we're not actually allowed to install sidewalks along Coral Ridge Avenue for those areas. So, this area will always be, to some degree, largely automotive-dependent, which is why, again, this area's largely been regional commercial and industrial in nature.
Okay, I thought it was the same.
Yep.
I thought we'd discussed this area before.
Any other questions? Okay, could I have the roll call, please?
Quinn.
Yay, aye, sorry.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its first consideration, all ayes. Item number seven, Lot 3 Red Hawk Subdivision, Part 2. This is the third consideration of an ordinance that would rezone this area for a standalone drive-through restaurant. Could I have the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 2023-1007, an ordinance amending the Corleville zoning ordinance, the same being ordinance number 2020-1009, as previously amended. Rezoning certain property located within the corporate limits of the city of Corleville, Johnson County, Iowa, and generally known as Lot 3 Red Hawk Subdivision, Part 2, from CPUD 1 Development to District, excuse me, from CPUD Commercial Plan Unit Development to District, introduced for adoption. Third consideration by council member Quinn, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Ordinance passes its third and final consideration, all ayes. And then, could I have item B, the resolution, please?
Resolution approving the PUD B Site Plan for Lot 3 Red Hawk Subdivision, Part 2, Corleville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by council member Jones, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. Any questions, comments, or thoughts on this?
No, it's not our call, but is there a point where there's too many restaurants in that area?
I don't think so. It's a fair question, though.
This is a Chipotle, isn't it, or Chipoli?
Chipoli.
We don't have one of those, Mike.
We don't, we don't.
And it'll, I have a feeling it will be quite popular. Any other questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number eight, we have several ordinances that need to be in place for our RagBri celebration coming up. These adjustments in these ordinances are required by each overnight city for the RagBri route, and these are only in effect the day of the arrival and the day the riders leave. So, we have Sherry Proud here. Do you have an overview for us, or any comments?
Yeah, I realize this is your second reading, so just really here to answer any questions and just to remind people that this is put in place for public health and safety, both of the riders that are coming to town, and as well as our community members. It affects food vendors, outdoor entertainment, alcohol permits, transportation such as pedicabs, also addresses things like glass is banned from, which is already banned from all the park system, but just as a reminder, and road closures. And it's also a good time for the community to take a look at corlevillragbri.com, because that will be up to date with all of the information on RagBri routes that bikers will be on that day. There will be disruption to 12th Avenue, 5th Street, 25th Avenue, 10th Street, and of course, the riders are coming in on Camp Cardinal Boulevard to 9th Street to 8th Street. So, those, all of those will be full of bikers, and will ask that residents plan other routes for their commute that day.
Thank you, thank you for that overview. We appreciate it. So, let's start with the first ordinance. This is the second reading of this ordinance, item A.
Ordinance number 2023-1008, an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Corleville, 2011, as previously amended regarding RagBri, introduced for adoption, second consideration by council member Goodrich, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Any other questions or discussion on this?
I have a question about parking. Is that in here, too? As I understand, the prohibition of parking from 2 to 6 will be waived that night.
It will be waived. I don't know, I don't remember reading that specifically in here, but there will be some streets that will be completely closed and not allow parking, and there will be other streets that we, that will not enforce the 2 to 6 on the, whichever side of the street, the right or left side of the street. Of course, you can't park in Corleville on both sides of the street.
Right.
Have the resident of those affected areas been notified, or how, I guess, what's the time length for them to get notification?
Mm-hmm. In terms of parking, or...
Closure, you know, they have to find a different route to get to where they need to be?
We've been already talking about it in the beat. We've already been talking about it with news releases, putting out things with Corleville, on all of our social media pages. I'm not sure that there's a plan to send a letter to everybody along every route, because they still can use them. We're just asking them to perhaps look at a different route on that day.
And the most populated street on that route, because I'm assuming, I'm trying to think of the ways in there, would probably be the route in front of the rec center, right? Are that route going in down...
Yep, 8th Street will be completely closed in front of the rec center and Northwest Junior High. 9th Street will be the route the riders will come in on, so that'll be very busy with bicycles, as well as Camp Cardinal Boulevard.
Yeah.
And then, from there, people could expect to see riders probably on every single street in Corleville during that day. We have riders staying at lots of houses. They'll want to get to other places. The community just needs to be really aware that we're expecting 30,000 to 40,000 bicyclists that day, and just want to be very cautious and make sure everyone stays safe.
Yep, and this is the sixth time that we have hosted. I mean, certainly, there would be folks that are new to the community since 2015, when, the last time we hosted it, but there are a lot, I think, a lot of residents that probably know the drill. But it's a great reminder to check all of those pages, all of those resources for specific information.
Sure, yes.
Any other questions? Okay, could I get the roll call, please?
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its second consideration, all ayes. Item B, I would entertain a motion to collapse the third reading of this ordinance.
So move.
Move by Quinn.
Second.
Seconded by Jones. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Item C, we have one final ordinance to read. Could I have that, please?
Ordinance number 2023-1008, an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Corleville, as previously amended regarding RagBri, introduced for adoption. Third and final consideration by council member Knutson, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any final questions or thoughts? Just want to say thank you to the committee, and to our staff, and all of the volunteers, and everybody who has been working on this. You know, we are pros at hosting RagBri. As I said, this is the sixth time we've hosted it in our community, but it definitely takes a lot of work to get it off the ground, and we just really appreciate everyone who's been helping and working on this. Okay, could I have the roll call, please?
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its third and final consideration, all ayes. Item number nine, option agreement. This is an option to purchase Lot 4, Iowa River Landing, Part 2, north of the west parking ramp on or before January 31, 2024. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution approving an option agreement with GM Development LLC, introduced for adoption by council member Gross, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Questions or comments? Okay, could I have the roll call, please?
Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich. Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number 10, purchase agreement. This property has a duplex that is currently leased until April 2024. The city will continue leasing the property until it is needed for redevelopment, and this purchase will allow the combining of this lot with another city-owned lot. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving a purchase agreement for 612 4th Avenue, Corleville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by council member Quinn, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Jones. Questions, comments, or discussion on this?
Yeah, I've got some questions, and maybe I missed the discussion. I guess, three, four. One, the notice given to tenants, how much time are we going to give them before...
Ideally, the tenants will choose to leave prior to us having to take any action, and that's what's happened in most of the cases in the past. This duplex is adjacent to the other properties that we purchased from Eastern Iowa Properties, and by purchasing this one, we can clean up some of the parcel lines and that kind of thing in that neighborhood that are, where there are driveways overlapping and that kind of thing. So, we hope to be able to accomplish that.
And the intention of the city purchasing, because we've purchased the other ones as well, right?
Right, yes.
And the intention is that we purchase them so that they are not rented again, and we are not displacing residents.
Correct, yes. And then, the ultimate goal becomes creating affordable owner-occupied houses.
Yes, but, I guess I'm, maybe I'm overthinking this, but none of that's like in the resolution we're going to vote on.
But it was in some of the other...
It is our intent.
Yeah.
It may not be in the resolution, but yeah, we're, that is the intent of the purchase. It became available for sale.
No, I'm not saying what we're going to do with it. I'm fine, I guess I'm just saying the whole, that we're going to continue leasing it until that time and all of that. I mean, what's preventing, if they're ready to go in three months, or four, or if they're ready to go in May of 2024?
They being...
The development, well, I thought the wait's being that, folks, the tenants stay until the time to develop.
I think redevelopment is maybe the wrong word there, you know. So, we own the properties to the north.
Right.
And so, there's enough room for multiple new homes. When we say redevelopment, we're not talking about multiplexes or anything like that, simply several new owner-occupied homes. And so, just to be able to do that, and we would be working closely with the developer, and when that time comes, it's not something that we're just going to hand off tomorrow.
I think what you're getting at, Mitch, is are you worried about residents being displaced?
Yeah.
That's, and I think the reason we purchase, and we've done this with the other properties as well, because we purchased a couple of those, and the idea is that the landlord would not re-let them.
Yes, yes, yes.
And so, the idea is...
Okay, so the families, the current tenants have been notified this is happening, then?
The current tenants are aware that their, the property they're in has been sold, but their lease does transfer to us.
Right.
So, yeah, and we have no intention of ending the lease.
Probably by April 2024, they need to be out.
Sorry?
But theoretically, by April 2024, they need to be out.
Well, I don't know, the lease is probably through next August, I'm just guessing, I'm not sure.
Well, it says April in the...
April 2024, okay, all right. I can tell you, I just really don't think that we'll be ready to do anything by then. If they, if they choose to leave, we would not re-lease it. We would, just like with the property to the north, as soon as those two tenants left, then we demolished it, but we did not, we didn't end any leases. We just let it terminate on its own, and then we demoed it.
And then, the reason we purchased, stepped in to purchase those, was so that the landlord would not re...
Would not re-lease or release that.
I get that. I guess I'm, maybe, I don't know who even lives there. I'm just thinking, it's by Corleville Central, to tell a family in April of a school year that's leaving, ending in six weeks from there that you have to leave, that's what I don't want to happen.
No, I really think that we'll wait until they choose to leave.
Okay.
And I think that's the best-case scenario. There is so much work that has to be done to do all of this. We have to, you know, I think we'll look at it in concert with the property on 5th Avenue Place, which needs some new utilities. There needs, we need to raise some areas because of the floodplain. We need to put in a new street, so there's a lot of work that has to be done. So, it's not something that's going to happen overnight.
Well, I think it's, too, Ellen, when you said August, because that was my, I mean, that just seems like a more of a timeline leases end, so that's why I thought April was a typo, but then it was also in the resolution, too. That's why I thought April was just an odd...
And I'm sorry I missed that, but yeah, that could be.
So, in theory, like, lease this month, after the April, is that what we would do?
We could, or we could give them another year if they so chose, yeah.
Whatever we decide.
You say them, this is a duplex, isn't it?
It's a duplex, so there would be two tenants, yes.
Two tenants, and add the same length.
But they, I can tell you, it's about 450 square feet on each side, so it's a tiny duplex.
And the rate per month is per duplex, or for both?
I think that's, that's total, that's for both, yes.
For both.
How many units, so the other one was a duplex, too? Obviously, quite small, as you just pointed out.
Yeah, those were all about the same footprint, yeah.
Are we going to put duplexes back on there?
We really don't, haven't gotten that far, you know. If we, if we put in something like a townhome, we certainly can get more, more, more units than if we do single-family homes. Sorry?
Would that need to be rezoned right there?
Well, definitely, we would do single-family south of, is that 7th Street?
Okay.
But then, on the north side, we might look at some townhomes there, just to try to get a little more density and a few more units.
That would be good, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think the bigger picture, and to your question, Mitch, is that we've gone about this in a way that, where we're not displacing folks.
Yeah, we're very aware of Corleville Central, and that's part of the reason that, you know, we've been pursuing this, is because Corleville Central does have a pretty high turnover rate, and, you know, we were trying to get a little more stability in that neighborhood.
Yeah, again, I think it was the April that threw me off.
Yep, yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay, could I have the roll call, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number 11, Colony Fenn Erosion and De-watering Correction Project. I would, this project repaired ongoing erosion and de-watering that threatened the long-term health of the fens, and I would entertain a motion to approve pay estimate number two, this is the final payment, to Triple B for the Colony Fenn Erosion and De-watering Correction Project.
So move.
Move by Goodrich.
Second.
Seconded by Gross. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution accepting the Colony Fenn Erosion and De-watering Correction Project as completed, introduced for adoption by council member Jones, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Any questions or comments on this? All right, roll call, please.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number 12, Recycling Partnership Grant Agreement. This is a grant supporting the purchase of recycling carts and education and outreach efforts with the goal of improving and enhancing the curbside recycling program. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving a recycling partnership grant agreement with the recycling partnership is introduced for adoption by council member Goodrich, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. Questions or comments on this? I know that this is going to be exciting for a lot of folks, and it's been a long time coming.
Yeah, I'll second that. You know, I think this is a step towards single stream. From what I understand, want to thank Eric and others, I'm sure, for their work on getting this grant, and I communicated with him this week. I understand he's working on another sources of grant funding to help this along the way, which would be great, and I think it'll also be good for staff to go to single stream. It'll be automated process, easier on their backs, as someone with a bad back knows that can make you suffer, so that'll be good for all, I believe.
Absolutely. And I think just a quick, quick note, I just want to clarify something. So, the soonest we would probably have this service available would be April of 2024, correct?
Yes, there are a lot of pieces that have to fall into place, and of course, supply chain issues that we kind of make some of those uncertain, so it's a little early for us to put a sure date out there, but rest assured, by this time next year, we should have single stream recycling.
That's very exciting. Any other questions or comments? Okay, could I have the roll call, please?
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number 13, Transfer of Funds. This action would give the Director of Finance approval to transfer unassigned funds above the required minimum of 35% of operating expenses in the general fund to other funds currently below the required minimum of 25% of operating expenses. And these fund minimums are set by the city's financial policy. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution authorizing the transfer of funds introduced for adoption by council member Knutson, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, could I have the roll call, please?
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number 14, Amendment to the Paratransit 28E Agreement. This amended 28E agreement is for Johnson County seats to provide a one-month extension, ending on July 31, 2023, while a new agreement for paratransit services is being negotiated. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution approving amendment to the 28E agreement for paratransit services between the city of Corleville and Johnson County, is introduced for adoption by council member Gross, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Jones. Questions or comments on this item?
So, this is to extend the period so that we can work on a new agreement because Iowa City moving to the fee, non-fee fare?
We have Vicki Robra here to answer any questions you might have.
So, essentially, we have separate agreements. Iowa City has a separate agreement with seats as well as Corleville does. However, they're kind of intermingled. It specifies who pays for what rides. So, when Iowa City has went going fare-free August 1st, it gave us a chance to kind of look at the agreement and make sure that... it gave us a chance to kind of look at the agreement and make sure that we don't need to change anything based on them going fair free.
Awesome.
We probably do need to change something, don't we?
It it all depends on essentially how we call out who pays for what rides. And there's some federal requirements that go into that mixture as well. So we just want to make sure we're compliant and we don't have any issues going down the road.
I guess how complicated would it make for our resident to transfer from one to the other when they switch their system?
So we don't do transfers, that's one of the efficiencies that we have. If a ride starts in Corralville and it goes to Iowa City, they don't transfer from that bus. Same way if there's a ride that starts in Iowa City and they come to Corralville, it's just streamlined to have efficiencies. That's why we share vehicles. It gives us the opportunity to use them across jurisdictions, which makes everybody's costs less.
So is seat going fair free as well, August 1st for Iowa City?
Or? Yes, they have.
So they will be.
Their para transit would have to be fair free as well if their fixed route is.
So I guess that's where I'm more concerned of the confusion, because it's still, will it still cost in Corralville?
Yes.
To ride, but then in Iowa City, it will be free?
Yes.
So it would be the people that you pick up in Corralville that would pay?
Yes.
But they won't have, but there's no transfers with seats?
Like physical transfers, no, correct?
Yes, so they wouldn't have like part of their whole, if you pick them up in Corralville, they would pay the fee. If you pick them up in Iowa City, it would be fair free? Yeah. And they would just take them to, it's a, there's no transferring?
No physical transfer of passengers.
Yeah. Any other questions?
I have one that's not related to this, but it's transit that was in the newspaper about the federal funding that would give Corralville to electric buses.
Uh, yes, we, the DOT put together a grant application. We did request two light duty buses that would be used in our para transit service. No low funding is what would be used for that. The DOT did receive the full grant amount. So now we're just kind of in a weight pattern. They're still dispersing funds from FY 21 and 22, I think, and our particular vehicles are in the FY 23 grant.
Are the full size electric buses too, still too big to get under the bypass there?
I do not believe so, no, we'll have, they're just smaller in nature. So I think we're not gonna have any height issues with that.
With the, with these, I'm talking about though, the full size.
The full size, yes.
It would still be.
At this time, we don't have any vendors that anybody's aware of that could meet that height requirement.
All good things to think about in the future, for sure. Okay, thank you, Vicky.
Thank you.
Okay, could I have the roll call, please?
Hun?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number 15, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Madam Mayor, I would like to ask Council to consider a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented, A to S.
Second.
Moved by Hun, seconded by Gross. Could I have a roll call, please?
Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Hun?
Aye.
Consent calendar is approved, all ayes. Item number 16, City Administrators Report.
Yeah, I would just like to remind people, we're approaching the Fourth and that means lots of activities. And I know that many of you will probably be talking about those, but I do want to hit just a couple. Number one, although you can buy fireworks in Corralville, they are illegal and to use them. You can use sparklers and snaps and.
The little snake thing.
Snakes, yes, thank you, snakes, the three S's. But the fireworks are illegal, if it goes up in the air, it's illegal, so not to be used in Corralville. And really, I don't believe anywhere in Johnson County for the most part. City offices are closed on July 4th and there's no transit that day. And then also trash and recycling is a little tricky next week. Monday is regular service, Tuesday, there's no service. So if you're Tuesday through Thursday, your service is a day late. So just keep that in mind. And everybody have a happy and safe Fourth.
Fantastic, thank you very much. Mayor's report, I have a few things. Thank you, Ellen, for bringing up the fireworks, that was on my list. As, you know, a reminder, not allowed, you know, even though we can sell them, they're not allowed to be activated within the City of Corralville. I would just really ask people to be considerate and thoughtful, you know? A lot of people have pets that are upset by the fireworks going off. I am in that situation, I have two very anxious dogs that get very frightened, very upset, or very hard to keep calm. You know, it's it's hard enough the night when we have the big fireworks show, but when people are firing them off randomly in town, it just, it just makes things really difficult. So there's pets that are upset by it. You, we have a lot of neighbors that might be struggling with PTSD. We have neighbors that have other sensory issues where, you know, the sound of the fireworks is is unpleasant and it's hard for them. So please be considerate and don't fire off the big fireworks in your yard, in your neighborhood. Now, if you do have neighbors that are firing things off, you want to contact law enforcement, please use the police non-emergency line. They will be doing their best to get out, to to check things out, but it's going to be a very busy weekend for our law enforcement as well. So don't call 911, just call the police non-emergency line if if you are having any issues with that. I also wanted to just note that Johnson County Public Health has put out some air quality warnings. There's a lot of smoke and haze in the air. And in fact, we are today in the designation that we have received is in the unhealthy zone. And just a little bit further north in the county is a very unhealthy zone. So just be aware of that and keep your eyes on the Johnson County Public Health's Facebook page, website. They're sending up to, or sharing up to date information on those, on those platforms and on those networks. And then lastly, I just wanted to say thank you to our staff at the library and to artist Isaac Campbell. I spent the weekend before this past weekend out helping with the wheat pasting around town. And if you have not seen the spectacular murals that are everywhere, please get out and have a look. I think my favorite one might be the one that's on the side of the rec center, other than the one that is on the side of Corralville Central, which has my son. I cried when the artist showed me the portrait of my son, I actually got very emotional and I started to cry. And it was so fun to paste his portrait up on on the building. So the library staff worked so hard on that project. And the whole time I was out there helping them, I was just thinking, wow, this is, this is incredible that we have staff, we have volunteers and and folks from the community that are so enthusiastic about this and willing to help. And it just made it all the more special. So thank you to everyone that participated in that. And I'm looking forward to the Fourth of July festivities. Check out the city's website, we have a lot going on and a lot of things that are connected with our sesquicentennial celebration as well. And that is all I have. A city attorney's report?
Kevin called and assured me that his vacation out of state had no bearing on our atmospheric problems here. That's all I have.
Well, I have to say, my vacation was, I was in Door County and we did, it was impacted. We had, we had some hazy skies up up on the peninsula for sure, so it's kind of all over the Midwest. Hopefully it'll clear up soon. Okay, committee and council members report, let's start down at this end with Councilmember Knutson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to give a shout out to the staff at the Corralville Center for Performing Arts and Evan in particular for giving us a tour of their facility down in the IRL a couple of weeks ago after our our meeting here. I had no idea that facility was getting such great use, that's that's amazing. There are a number of kids that are going in there in the summer in particular, but throughout the year and and participating is fantastic. Like, I'll just, as an aside, kind of the elephant in the room, to me at least, was this is probably not a facility long term for for this activity, there's probably other uses. You know, it's a great use of it of this spot at the moment. And I just want to encourage staff, if and when we get to the point where where we do something else with that property that we think long and hard and try to prioritize keeping a home for for those activities. I think that would be very important. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Gross?
Thanks, Madam Mayor, a lot's been covered, I guess. I chuckled a little bit, because if you remember, the last couple of years, I've given the address of Senator Jake Chapman to go fire fireworks off in front of his house, since he wrote the bill, but he was defeated in November.
I was gonna say, can't contact him.
So I don't have to do that anymore, so I think, yeah. So I'm crashing that one off. And just too, yeah, as far as air quality, I had that on my list too, because actually, high school events were canceled tonight because of the air quality. So just please be very, very, very cognizant. And then just I want to say a huge shout out to the staff with Fourth Fest and RagBri. I know you guys are gonna be super busy, so we deeply appreciate all that you do during these times. That's all I've got, Mayor, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Hun?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Um, I do have a question, what are the five for shooting off fireworks, since it's illegal?
250 is the first offense. I don't know what the subsequent offenses are.
It's a standard 250, I think.
Okay.
There's an enhancement after the first one.
Okay, that's, I wasn't sure if there was an enhancement or not.
No, I, I, I'm lucky in a way that I don't have any friend that would like to break the law, so. But just wanted to put it out there for the general public to know what they are getting themselves into if they decide to, I don't know, break the laws. So, um, I don't have much to say. I do want to put in a plug for the summer lunch program that is happening all over our community. Right here in Corralville, it is at the Corralville Food Pantry. Actually, it's not in the food pantry itself, it's taking place in the community room of the church that is connecting the pantry and the church. And this is our third week and it's going strong. However, we like to see more family and more kids that come and eat with us, and we do have activity every day. This Friday is very exciting, the fire department is going to bring out their fire truck. So if you are in town, coming for a bite of good food and some fun activity with our firefighter, that's all I have.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I just want, I have the pleasure of serving on the Corralville Community Fund, which is an affiliate fund of the Community Fund of Johnson County. And we just finished our grant cycle for 2023. And I just wanted to note, we awarded 21,000 in grants and those grants went to the Corralville Food Pantry. We made a four year commitment three years ago that we would support the building. And so we, we were in our third year of our pledge. We gave some funds to the Parks and Rec Department for the improvements at Northridge Park. We also were able to support the wheat pasting project. And then we also gave money to Horizons for support of Meals on Wheels in, for Corralville residents specifically. And then we were also, our board was also agreeable to being, becoming a friend of RagBri. So we made a $500 donation to RagBri. So I'd just like to give the report of what the community fund is doing. Our assets are slowly growing, although it's up and down with the market. But we were able to grant 21,000 plus become a friend of RagBri this year, so we're happy to be able to do that. And this year especially, all these projects were really solidly Corralville based projects. Sometimes it gets a little murky about, not that we don't have lots of worthy organizations, but these all specifically benefit Corralville. I just wanted to echo some of the things that have been said. First of all, thank all of the folks who are working on RagBri, staff and and community volunteers. And and they, there's still a need for many volunteers for RagBri, still a need for housing. So if you're interested in doing that, please check the city website, check the RagBri website. Also, a thank you to the 150th Committee, Lori will probably have some things to say about that. I would say the wheat pasting projects, as someone said earlier, they're the surprise hit of the summer. They are so much neater than I ever thought there would be, it's hard to grasp the concept. And they really are special, so thanks to all who who helped with that. And I know the 150th Committee, especially for the Fourth of July events, needs some help as well. There's volunteers needed for a number of things, but lots of opportunities from this Saturday through next Tuesday. And I hope citizens of Corralville take advantage of those. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Last but not least, Councilmember Goodrich.
Thank you. I would like to mention that the Corralville Connection will be coming to all residents in Corralville and that has all the things that have been talked about here. Especially the, all the things that are going on for the Fourth of July. So please take some time, enjoy this, and it tells you more about the wheat pasting too, if you're wondering about that. Also, the, this newspaper bunch has come out, we special ordered this from the Gazette and it's our sesquicentennial edition. And has numerous articles and pictures and just a wonderful time that you can have of reading about Corralville and some of the highlights of people that have made Corralville their home. But that's basically, that's what I have, thanks.
Awesome, thank you.
Madam Mayor, one more thing.
Sure, yeah.
I don't know if these are still available, but.
They're at the front desk.
I had a couple of people say, was there any place you can get a map of the wheat pasting projects that are up? And so these are at City Hall, at at the receptionist's desk, also they're at the library. So if a citizen would want to stop and get one of these, it shows you where they're at and and that way you can make sure you get to see all of them.
That's great, and thank you for for bringing that up, because you won't want to miss. Some of them are kind of hard to find, the one at on West Music is in kind of a hidden spot. But they're, they're quite spectacular, so that's, that'll, that'll be a great resource for for folks to to find those. All right, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Moved by Hun?
Seconded?
Seconded by Jones, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you, everyone.